So just a little background on Norton's water system. The infrastructure of the system dates back to 1906. There's almost 5,900 customers and the water system as well as the sewer system are enterprise funds. And that essentially means that all the costs and all the revenues stay within water. So there are certain fees charged by the town to help manage things in the water system, but that's all worked out. So the idea is that your rate funds water only, not anything that's going on outside of water. And that's kind of what an enterprise system is. So the water system includes five wells and those were installed between 1972. There have been some replacement wells, so some are a little newer up to 2009. The two and a half million gallon per day treatment plant is expected to go online this fall, so it's not ready yet, but we're getting close to the time that it'll go online. There are two elevated water storage tanks and two storage reservoirs. And there's about 120 miles of pipe in the ground, varying in size from six inch to 16 inch in diameter. So just to give you an idea of some of the projects that have been going on recently. The Reservoir Street water main, that was $1.1 million worth of funds to design and construct that. The 2.5 million gallon water treatment plant construction is $10.5 million on that treatment plant. There are a couple of projects that Holmes and East Main Water Street is $520,000 and that will probably start real soon. The Pine Street water main will probably start in the spring, but maybe in the late fall, and that's worth $2.7 million. So some upcoming capital projects includes the Mass DOT Route 123 water main and $700,000 was appropriated for that. The water department is also looking at upgrading with some satellite wells or single wells. It may be a well field or single wells for wells five and six. That's top priority because those produce more flow. So that's $1.35 million. Also a satellite well for well four at $750,000. One of the elevated storage tanks needs rehabilitation, which is essentially repainting it. But we are also looking at whether it's more cost effective to put up a new water storage tank. So that will range in cost from $750,000 to $1.5 million. And then what we plan for, we're in the process of finalizing a water master plan that's looking at improvements over the next 20 years for the water system. And the idea is to continually put money into the water system and upgrade the wells, the storage tanks, the treatment plant, the water mains. And we're planning on $2 million a year for that over the next 20 years. So the current rate, the minimum quarterly charge is $35. And you'll see the 0 to 400 cubic feet is $28. And if you take 25% and add that on, you get the $35. So the minimum charge for anyone in one quarter is $35. And then if you use more than the 400 cubic feet, you're into different levels of cost during that quarter. And proposed is we're going to $35 for the minimum charge, but when you add the capital charge of 25%, it brings the minimum charge to $43.75. And then the tiered levels will stay the same. So that will start January 1st of 2020. So we wanted to give you a little idea of what Norton's water rates have equated to and then maybe also some water rates around the area in Massachusetts. So we took this information, so basically with every change in the water rate over the past six years, this represents what is called industry standard for a household of four people. The calculation is industry standard is 12,000 cubic feet of water. So if we figure out the different history of water rates in Norton, in 2006 for 12,000 cubic feet of water on an annual basis, it was $333. So today, using the rates that were established in 2015, that same 12,000 cubic feet of water would cost a family of four $672. And with the changes, starting in January 1 of 2020, that will bring the cost to $707. So we wanted to show you within Massachusetts what sort of historically has been the cost of water for all communities in Massachusetts for the same amount of water for 12,000 cubic feet. So in 2000, it was at $271. And the last time this information was updated, it was $595. And here you can see for that 12,000 cubic feet, what some similar communities pay for water rates. So Attleboro, for example, is at $558 for 12,000 cubic feet, ranging for Foxborough pays $1,082. You can see Norton there, and that's the current rate at $672. And you can see that the Massachusetts -- we're going to hold questions to the end.
I just got here. It's 7:02. What are you sliding on?
This is the last one.
Sorry, I missed the one.
They shouldn't have started the meeting at seven.
I think people coming in, Jim, full.
I can run through it again if you want me to.
You mean like missing something else? It starts at seven, right?
We'll happily run it again.
All right, I'm not trying to be a jerk.
No, you don't have to.
I mean, the public meeting starts at seven.
So you can also see, we put the orange line there of the average annual water bill that was calculated for 2017 of $595. So you can see how the different communities relate to that.
Are you really?
And that's it. You want me to run it again?
I believe.
You want to wait a few minutes or?
You know what? I think it would be good to go for a few questions and then for any stragglers, let's give everybody a chance, just so we get the full impact. On the side.
Is there on the capital improvement for water, there's one for sewer currently. Is there one for water currently as well?
We're finalizing one.
But there isn't one now.
We have, from our experience in the system, we have what are most urgent projects on and they were in the middle of that presentation. There's a couple, the one on Reservoir Street that was recently.
No, I'm just asking right now.
The Massa Plant itself.
No, for the rates that you get, a water bill currently, there seems to be a capital improvement that's assessed against your sewer usage. Is there a capital improvement that's assessed against your water usage or is that combined? When I get a bill, there's a capital improvement.
It's a capital fee, right.
Right, and that seems to be just against sewer. Is this a whole new capital fee against water?
I can't say it's exactly that, but it is.
So the 25% against the first 400 cubic feet and then.
That goes to the capital of the system that was expanded to keep the system like it is.
Any water usage above the 400 feet for the next three, two tiers there also has a 25% surcharge to it for a capital improvement.
Yes, right. It was just about the minimum fee. As time went by, we did not adjust the minimum fee in usually respect for low water users. What has happened is it's actually a burden for the people who use more than that to carry those low users. That minimum fee is not enough to cover that 400 cubic feet of water. And it hasn't been for some time and we didn't make an adjustment because the treatment plant was coming and we knew there would be rate changes of that, so we wanted to make them all at once when better water was imminent.
So I'm not sure, and I'll be the first person to say that math is not my thing, but.
So glad you're on the phone.
Hey, do you have a point? I'm not understanding how just increasing the minimum and keeping the rates for every other tier the same and the capital percentage the same is going to cover 12 and a half million dollars for this plant.
Very good point, and it doesn't. This is 2020. We have a layered approach towards our increases. We're not doing it all at once. We're going to step it up over several years, a little at a time.
But this doesn't show any increase. This shows an increase on the minimum only.
This is for 2020.
But the rest, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so I guess the question is, what do the next five years look like, Luke?
Yeah.
We're getting there.
Here it is. Look at your star. You should tell me what the next five years look like.
Sure.
There you go.
There you go.
Okay, we're going to go back to. Matt, would you not hold the lights up there?
I can grab it.
Just the front lights.
Yeah, just the front ones.
Thank you.
Well, all four of them.
Thank you very much.
You want me to go through it again?
This is in response to the, what do the next few years look like?
Why isn't it bad on this chart that we have next year?
Excuse me?
Why don't we have that copy of that from 2021? Yeah. It's enough of our information for the coming years.
I'm not sure why it didn't make it to that sheet, but it's on the screen.
Well, I bet she had one on the screen.
So you could write it in. So the difference is you're going from 53.75 to 57.75. And then the 500 to 2,000 is going from 337 to 371. And above 2,000 is going from 525 to 578.
How many years is that going to happen?
It's a 10% increase on the tiered rates every year.
For how many years?
For the next several years is the point.
Probably four or five, but we have to reevaluate after this first initial.
Sometimes when you do water rates, some people will use less water or more water and then you reevaluate the next couple of years. This is why we didn't want to project it too far out, but the intent was to show you at least the first year increase and then the next year, 2021 is the next increased tier. And then the intent was to just keep it at a 10% increase of the next couple of years if appropriate, depending on spending and revenue.
Well, there was no intent because this slide wasn't even in the first nine that were shown.
I understand your.
It was done by the time everybody got here.
One second, please. I understand your confusion, but the presentation was not complete as indicated by this slide. So let's all just kind of be a community and discuss our water system. Can we do that?
That's why I agree with you, Brent. It's time to act civil and be.
So if you have questions, we're happy and we're here to answer the questions. But what we're doing is.
When are you going to start over? Because I'm just sitting here listening to questions. I don't know what you're talking about.
We were waiting for any possible stragglers. We will catch it again.
Okay, we're going to ask all the questions again because this is meaning nothing to me at this point because I don't understand any of this.
Hi.
Hi.
So I'm not very educated on this topic, but from the rumors I hear is that the new water system will not help because the pipes are bad. Can you just speak to that?
Sure. It goes to, the easiest analogy is with your phones or your digital laptops and whatnot, garbage in, garbage out. If you've got bad code that provides your operating system for your laptops or your phones, you've got bad services with your electronic devices. Everybody's got a phone, you've got a good service, good provider, you're good. If we put untreated water into our current pipes, you're going to get some version of that untreated water out. I think we can all agree, we've all had filtered water, even a Brita filter. It's a level of better filtration. This is a very high level of filtration. When put through our existing mains, will be much better coming out. What our annual expenses going forward, we intend to be of $2 million a year in the infrastructure beyond the treatment plant. So each year, we have projects totaling approximately $2 million to get the better pipes, to get the worst part of our pipes fixed. We've already been doing that for several years now, but.
So the pipes are actually in this plant?
The plant is brand new. The pipes leading to your faucet from this plant are old. I don't know where your house is, but there's a combination. Some have been updated, some haven't been updated, some have updated ones beside them that we haven't jumped over to. There's a lot to do.
Do you have a plan to fix the pipes?
We are there. That's where we are and this is what we're talking about.
And tie fights for that?
Like I said, we're governed by the amount of money that we can afford to put into our infrastructure each year and that will be $2 million. But at this point, I'm going to jump back and for those who came in at the seven o'clock, I'm going to stop from the beginning and we're going to go right through it. Because you did it so well the first time, Barbara, I want to see it again. It's got a bad operating system.
There we go.
So a little bit about the Norton water system. The infrastructure dates back to 1906, so that kind of gives you an idea of how old some of the pipes are. About 5,900 customers. It's an enterprise fund, so that means all the money you provide for water, when you pay your water bill, all that money goes directly to the water department. It doesn't fund any projects in the town. So taxes would fund a new town hall, water rates fund the treatment plant and water mains. The water system consists of five wells and those were installed between 1972 and 2009. Some of those wells, we've just upgraded some existing wells and those are some of the newer ones from 2009. The treatment plant is scheduled to go online in the fall. It's going to provide up to 2.5 million gallons per day when all the wells, when the three wells are upgraded that go through the plant. And you've got two elevated storage tanks and two storage reservoirs, about 120 miles of pipe. And that pipe varies in size from six inch to 16 inch in diameter. Recent incurred capital projects include 1.1 million for the Reservoir Street water main that was recently completed, 10.5 million for the treatment plant construction. A project that should start very soon is the Holmes and East Main Streets water main and that's valued at $520,000. And then the Pine Street water main will likely start in the spring of 2020 and that's $2.7 million. So some upcoming projects is the Mass DOT Route 123 water main. So Mass DOT is doing some work on 123 and we're upgrading that water main. That's $700,000. We are upgrading the wells that go to the water treatment plant and those are four, five and six. We're working on five and six first because those are the largest producing wells and that's valued at 1.35 million. The next project will be upgrading well four, which is $750,000. The Cottage Street Elevated Water Storage Tank needs rehabilitation or essentially recoding, repainting on the interior and exterior, but we are going to compare that to a new tank because the cost might be close. And that project is valued between $750,000 and $1.5 million. And then as we said, we're looking at doing $2 million per year of water main improvements over the next 20 years through the water master plan. Typically what you do is you have a plan of what you want to do over the next five years and sort of a long-term plan from five to 20. And every year you relook at those. So if we're paving certain streets, we might change the priority a little so that you're not ripping up our recently paved street. So that's the idea of a master plan that's kind of a living document that goes over 20 years. The current water rate is $28 and there's a capital charge on that of 25% that brings it to $35 for the minimum use of water. And that's from 0 to 400 cubic feet. And this is quarterly. And then there are two tier steps depending on water use per quarter at 337 per 100 cubic feet and 525 per 100 cubic feet. So proposed in 2020, January 1st, the minimum quarterly charge will be raised essentially from the 35 to 43.75 for that first 400 cubic feet of water. And then the tiers will remain at the same rates. And just to give you an idea of what you've spent for water over the history of water rates in Norton back to 2006. Typically people look at household use, so a family of four, what they might use in a year. And it's kind of an industry standard, that's 12,000 cubic feet of water. And so back in 2006, based on the water rates in Norton, you would have paid $333. Today, for 12,000 cubic feet, you would pay $672. And come the start of January of 2020, you'll pay $707. Annually, again for that standard of 12,000 cubic feet, to 2017, which is the last time this water rate survey was done, was $595 for 12,000 cubic feet. So we compared some communities to look at what their current rates are for 12,000 cubic feet of water. And Attleboro is at $558, ranging to Foxborough for $1,082. Norton, based on current rates, is at $672 annually. And you can see that orange line represents the Massachusetts average of $595. And I bring up the other slide. So this shows the 2020 rates that I presented and then proposed for fiscal year 2021, so July 1st. Sorry, no, that's incorrect. It is correct. So it's fiscal year 2021, so that starts July 1st of 2020. So the rate will go up to 57.75 for your first 400 cubic feet. And then the tiers will increase also to 371 for 100 cubic feet and above 2,000 cubic feet to 578.
Which basically is a 10% increase per year for the next several years until we assess. Because as Barbara said in the beginning of our presentation, we are an enterprise account. We are responsible for getting the revenue from you, our users, and paying our infrastructure, our maintenance, our employees, their retirements, all the whole water costs. So, and we also need to have a certain amount of retained earnings for emergencies and unexpected issues because the water system is much like your house. It has unexpected problems. Your roof needs to be changed, your water heater leaks, whatever. We have a lot of big expenses, so our retaining earnings has to be stabilized. After a couple of years, flourish. We will analyze these every year, but after flourish years, we'll look at what's happening with our retained earnings and if they're stabilized, we will stop the increases. But we can't run upside down and crash with our retained earnings. We cannot go to the town and borrow money. We cannot go to you people for borrowing money for operating costs. We can borrow money for projects, but we have to be self-sufficient. Call us a little business. We're a utility company. So that being said, we had, in several of our meetings, we had three possible scenarios and different ways to do this. We could have brought it all the way to the fourth year route all at once, but we didn't think that was the right way to go. I don't want to shock people. I don't like increasing rates. We waited till now till the treatment plant being online is imminent. So you will get, no, you shouldn't get the, the first bill comes in the first quarter of, so it's March or.
Q3.
So you should have your new water treatment plant treated water in your faucets at your taps prior to paying the increase bill. That was our goal and I think we're going to be able to stick to that if the DPP and our water and our treatment plant all do as expected. It's not even, it's not even fingers crossed. It's very well built. Their oversight is very good and they've done a lot of this. This jump is a huge thing for us. It's been kicked down the road for too long. Our wells have been getting more and more iron and manganese as the increased demand on our system draws more water from our wells. We've needed the filter, the same filter that we have 10 years ago, but nobody wanted to do it. Oh, the wells will get better and on and on and on. We have these internal discussions, but we never really pulled the trigger to do it because it costs money. But a lot of you are probably buying bottled water. Maybe you'll choose not to buy the bottled water once the better water is coming from your tap. I don't know. But I hope some of that answers. But I hope some of that answers your questions, and feel free to...
Look, somebody asked earlier if you guys could introduce yourself before.
Sure.
So can you do that quickly?
Frank Fornia, Norton Water Superintendent.
Steve Bishop, Water Commissioner.
Luke Grant, Water Commissioner.
Scott Oliverhead, Water Commissioner.
Barbara Cook, Weston Sampson.
Tara.
Tara McManus, Weston and Sampson. And then we have...
And we have...
Matt Abrams, Abrams Group.
Thanks, Matt. So again, any comments, questions, observations?
That $2 million you were talking about that you have for like doing projects every year?
Right.
Is that guaranteed to go to a project every year, or is that like if there's something happens at the new place, that, that could actually take that money away?
The, um, the, the new plant is going to be relatively maintenance-free for some time. There might be a few glitches getting going, but once it's up and running, it's really, it's going to increase our staff a little bit, but that's different. The, um, the $2 million is really targeted for our infrastructure improvements on our worst. We've triaged the pipes in town, we know the oldest, we know the areas of town that are the worst for the water and, and most main breaks and that sort of thing, and I'm sure some of you people know where they are because they're in front of your house. So the $2 million is really just for infrastructure improvements. And some years, it may be 1.6, because they don't come in even bunches. You can't really like replace a third of a street. If, if highway comes up and says, hey, we're going to redo, you know, Bird Street, we darn well better make sure that pipe under Bird Street is good because A, there's a five-year moratorium on breaking the pavement for such a project of a water main, and B, it would be foolish to do it at years six, seven, and eight also, to bust up a new road. So we're trying to, um, to work with the other highway departments and other, other people in town to kind of come up with a whole plan and a, a strategy. But the $2 million annually is what we need. Sometimes it'll go more than that, you know, because they come in an entire road, so it's some, it might be 2.3, and maybe the following year, we do, you know, 1.6 or 1.7.
What makes sense.
But...
The other question I had was Mass DOT Route 123 main project, that's costing us 700,000? How is DOT involved in that? Just weird question.
No, that's a good one. It's exactly what I said. Mass DOT has issued a, we're going to do this road. In the pecking order, it's federal, it's state, it's town. The way the money flows, Mass DOT is our boss. So they're going to do this road. There are infrastructure issues in 123 from here to the highway that are going to be covered by a brand-new pavement, so we have to come up with $700,000 to fix our water main, which is not DOT. That's not the Mass DOT. The Mass DOT owns the road, we own the...
So they're redoing the road, and we'd be smart to get in there while they got it open?
We are required to get in there and do our thing, because again, there's a five-year moratorium, and who wants to go over a patched road that just got redone that's a 40- or 50-year life? And you can surface repair, and you can do these infraredding, but it's not as good as a nice uniform overlay.
What's the, the annual budget for the water department? Can you give a, a hard idea?
I know the total for both, what is it, three?
I don't have to know that.
Water and sewer approaches 6 million. Water itself, I, I...
And had you, had you had an ongoing maintenance budget per year at this point in the $100 million range, or what?
Um, not in an organized fashion. Much, much like we would do mains that were like Reservoir Street was a million-ish. That was a problematic main, poor soils, and it would constantly break, so in, in contractor speak, we were replacing it six feet at a time. You'd have a main break, you'd do that patch, then you'd have another main break, and once you do three or four of those, you look in the mirror and say, I think that one's got to be done. So that was a million dollars, and that's, that's what kind of we've been doing. It's, it's been bouncing, it's been bouncing off a million and a half anyway, but we can't, we can't come up to where we need to be with the new water treatment plant without dedicating a couple million dollars a year of dedicated improvements.
And is there, did you put a bond for the water treatment plant, or are what's there?
That is a, um, it's SRF-funded, so it's a state-funded, low-interest-rate loan. And that, where some of those loans are coming due, now, the payments are coming due, we had construction funding, but as the plant becomes online, now we have to start making those payments.
Is that going to be done over a 15-year, 20-year period, or?
I think it's a 20, that's a 20-year loan.
Around 600, 700,000 a year, or?
Exactly, $660,000 a year.
Okay.
I understand you correctly that the new rates are going to be going in January 1st at 4375, and then in July, 20, because in fiscal year 2021, we're going in 5775, we're going in July, 2020?
Correct. So you'll get your first bill for the 2021 in, what?
Feels like March.
September? No.
Well, 2021 is, yeah.
Yeah.
Two weeks.
So, a year from now.
The first, the first increase, I think is what you're asking, will be realized in the March, the first quarter bills.
The March bill.
So the first increase on the minimum users will be, January 1st will be reflected in your March bill. As, as I said before, the minimum bill, we've left alone for quite some time, and the other users were really carrying the, the lower users, and it's, it's, it's not equitable, and it's not fair, so we had to make adjustments across the board, and this, this is how it started.
So we have two weeks, is it?
Correct. The, the, it, it is, it is in the calendar year, but municipal, municipalities go on a fiscal year beginning July 1st. So we, we did the January 1st for the, that mid-year thing for the fiscal year, but yes, it is two in the same year, only that time.
So I have the budget information for you. Based on the town meeting this past spring, water was 3.68 million, and sewer was just under 1.7.
Okay.
So can I have a clarification for the West Main Street project? I think we had raised 4.2 million previously, and you guys were looking for 1.5 more at that meeting. So I see it's only 700,000. So how do we get from 5.7 down to 700K?
So that's sewer.
That's different projects.
This is all water.
That's the West Main Street sewer extension that they're working on right now. This is over by the highway.
Okay. So when, how do the sewer improvements impact rates? Is that coming as well, or are they completely separate from the whole?
Total, separate enterprise funds. We have a sewer enterprise and a water enterprise.
Yeah, you have to look at them as separate businesses. It's a, it's a very small utility company.
Okay.
And, and honestly, sewer is sewer, and water is water. The sewer monies aren't borrowed or co-mangled with the water. We, we have to separate very carefully, fiscally, the sewer from the water.
Okay, but in other words, is there a sewer rate increase coming as well? Because I know there was recent improvements in the MFN plant. Now, this 5.7 million, this isn't...
The, the MFN plant is online, and there are some coming through, but it's, they're, they're right on track, and it doesn't seem at this time there will be a sewer rate increase.
Yeah, this time.
If no sewer rate increase, that was done.
Right now.
But they're built together.
They are built together. Sewer is a portion of your water.
It has to do with your incoming water and that's outgoing, that's how you pay on sewer rate.
That's just the volume, not the rate.
I have a question. Can I ask, I'm, I'm coming out a little bit from the financial angle, I'm trying to understand. The enterprise account, the whole idea of an enterprise account, as I understand it, is that it's supposed to cover your expenses. It's, I mean, you, you're supposed to raise what you spend.
Right.
And so you're not supposed to raise more, you're not supposed to raise less, except you can raise more and put in a...
Retained, retained earnings.
Yeah, okay. And what, what's our balance in our water surplus, retained earnings, whatever the account is probably over?
It varies around a million dollars. Do you know what it is now?
I want to say it's around 2 million?
2 million.
Okay.
But we've been depleting it.
Right, we just did a water improvement project with the retained earnings. And it's, um, it's like the, the ad on TV for the, the septic company that says you can pay now or you can pay later. The retained earnings is a way to moderate shortfalls in our budget, and if it gets to be what we consider excessive, and it's hard to know what's coming around the corner, honestly, it is. If it gets to be more than we believe should be in retained earnings, we do a project with it because we need the project anyway, and it's just different, uh, different than borrowing. You've already funded it, and it's actually really cost-effective to do it that way. There's no interest on the money, and these are significant projects, so the interest is quite a bit of money.
Okay, well, you, I mean, you detailed in, in some detail what's going to be spent and how much the projects are. You haven't really said how much per year yet, and I know some of that depends on when you want to bond or borrow and, and all that stuff. But the, the amount of the increase for the first year, do you know how much extra income or revenue that generates? I mean, the, the first year's, I mean, how much is that going to add in funds coming in?
Um, Matt, you have, um, you've probably been eavesdropping on the conversations. It's, it's hard to, it's hard to spec out because obviously, sometimes we anticipate the water quality going up, and then usage goes up, so it's, there's a little Ouija board you really got to kind of consider.
Yeah, but I'm assuming you had to base, you had to base it on something to try to get your, what you were doing, so I'm just wondering, how much additional revenue are you expecting from the, the first year's thing? Because what I'm looking at is, I just added up quickly in my head as you were talking about the project, and that was like 14 or 15 million dollars worth of projects. And then I'm looking at the first year of the rate increase and seeing that basically it's just a minimum going up.
Well, the first...
I'm not a math major either, but I know raising the minimum isn't going to cover...
No, it's, um, it's not 14 million dollars worth of projects. We're trying our target, annual infrastructure improvement is $2 million annually.
Okay, but, and, and, and I, I understand that, but if you, like you were talking about building a, a plant of, you know, I mean, you've got this plant, and you're building another plant that was 10, 10-point-something million dollars.
They are.
And I'm assuming, I don't know if that's the town's cost, or if that's the overall cost, and there's going to be grants or loans or, or whatever, but I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand how we get to cover that with what looks to be, at least initially, a small increase. How are we going to pay for a $10 million project by raising rates the way you indicated? It doesn't make any sense to me.
Because you pay it over 20 years, right? And you fund it, and the, the 10 million plan is, what is it, 670,000 a year, so?
And so how much are you, how much are you, raising the fees generates how much? That's what I'm trying to understand.
I get it.
Yeah, year one is, there's not much impact, you're right. We estimated about $80,000 from that, from that first increase that you're focused on right now. But the year-two increase, as was shown, or as is still shown out there, would have a much more significant impact on finances than year one.
Okay, well, you said that it was going to go up basically 10% a year.
Right.
I understand that, you know, 10%, the second year is more because it's on a bigger base than the year before, but if you're going up 10% per year, you shouldn't have any great spike in any one year. You know, if you, if you, you budget $10, and you go up by 10%, you're at $11. The next year, you go up by 10%, that's a dollar 10. So it's not a, a huge increase. So for the life of me, I'm looking at these projects and figuring out, with that kind of increase, how are you going to get? I understand it's spread over 20 years, but we haven't raised the rates as we go along. My, my concern, the reason I ask it, is because I'm concerned that for what we're spending and for what we're going to commit to spend, that we're seriously underfunded, and at some point, the hammer's going to fall, and the rates are going to go up by some huge, tremendous amount. And, and I'm wondering about what strategy is involved in trying to get there, because the, the 10% a year for a few years doesn't seem like it would get you there.
We, we have a lot of users, so the, the increases are spread over many users, and Matt Abrams is from, the Abrams Group, a very well-respected Massachusetts consultant that deals with the water and sewer industries exclusively. And they have analyzed all of our data, and we had, as a commission, three different options. This is our option. We didn't want to go from zero to what will be our rate in four years if we don't need it. We're going to analyze and look at our retained earnings and how our projected incomes are annually, but after four years, we may make an adjustment to continue the 10% increases, or we may decide that, hey, retained earnings have balanced out at a comfortable level, we're doing our $2 million improvements, and we don't need to make an adjustment right now. Our goal, I'm just going to give you one second. Our goal is to be as class-conscious as we can, and it is very difficult, because on the one hand, you have the very vocal people, and maybe there are few, maybe there are a lot of them. I know from one of your columns, you said you have good water at your house, but some people don't, and they're very vocal about, I'm willing to pay more for good water. So we have to balance everything out with who has the good water and how we provide that, and at this time, we believe our consultants, who have had many years, Matt's father, Mark, consulted with us many years, and I believe they're not the, um, the new kid on the block, and I believe their analization of our rates and our income.
But, but that doesn't answer the question. That doesn't say how you get to the, to the point. Raising the rates the way you say is not going to cover what you're going to have to spend going forward. And I understand people are willing to pay more for good water. The real problem is people aren't willing to pay for bad water, and, and that's the, that's the problem. And it, it, it's, it's like, if there was an option that, hey, you know, okay, if you pay this much, you get the bad water, but if you pay this much, you get the good water, I'm pretty sure everybody would pay more and, and get the good water, because it's a real pain in the neck when you, when you don't.
Right.
But I, I'm, I'm just, this doesn't make sense. It, 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 fiscally, financially, logically, in any way, shape, or form, this makes zero sense, not a single bit of sense. And I, I, you're not explaining the financial. At town meeting, we approved, and, and actually, it's, it's not really right to say we approved, because in some cases, like town meeting only votes on the budget because it's an agreement between the, it's not binding, so town meeting doesn't really control the water bottom budget, and I don't want to get all technical on that stuff. But, but we vote these projects before we know what the rates are going to be and what they increase, so we're doing it backwards. We're, we're committing to a project before we know the impact on what it's going to cost the ratepayers. That's dumb. That, I mean, how can we keep doing that?
Well, you're...
How can we keep earning money when we don't know what it's going to cost us?
Now I have to be the, um, the moderator in this case and say, our consultants have told us what it will be, and this is what it is. And you, you disagree with that, and you have that right.
I don't disagree, I can't disagree with it, because I have heard me that.
It's...
You can't disagree with what hasn't been told to you. But I don't want to run you anything.
Could I maybe ask, this is Dave Renn, 34th Law Lane. Can I ask a question maybe in a different way? So I, I'm sure the consultants are very talented and puts this all together, and I don't doubt their work. But can we have someone explain to us to see the, the inflows of money and the outflows of money over a period of time, so we know this makes sense? I mean, wasn't that part of the analysis? Because I'm wondering, I guess I'm wondering why we're not seeing that analysis?
It, it has been, it is, and a lot of times, we try not to put you to sleep with too technical data, and I guess a lot of people yearn for the technical data, but I, I kind of reside on the fact that, um, again, our, our longtime consultants looked at all this, and we will analyze it.
I mean, I guess...
Maybe, maybe we can follow up, if that, if that...
Yeah, I can hear you.
I don't, I don't have the, the breakdown in front of me, obviously, but if, um, those of you who yearn for the specifics, if you come to our meeting in a couple of weeks, we'll, we'll have all the details.
Well, this is going to be a public meeting, we're talking about the rates and how they were set, and I guess I'm not really understanding how they were set, and they were kind of pulled out of the air in at 10% a year, but it's not really tying into what we're going to be spending on projects, what's coming in, maintenance, ongoing maintenance, how's that all come together into these percentages in the bill's point? Doesn't sound like it's increasing quick enough to keep up with what you're hoping, and I would think someone did a cash flow analysis. And then analyzed this.
Yeah, we didn't really pull, pull this choice out of the air, we looked at three...
No, I'm sure you did, I guess I'm not just like...
Well, you said, well, you said we did. Well, you said, well, you said we did.
Like, where did you get it?
That's, that's really not, that's not contributing to the discussion. So what, what we did was, we had-
I don't follow where you're getting these numbers.
We had our consultant, who is, again, a specialist in Massachusetts water and sewer. And they formulated three different paths to fund our treatment plant and up to two million dollars annually. That's our proposed infrastructure expenditures going forward for four-ish years. And we'll, we'll review them annually. And that's, that's the nitty gritty of it, to, um, to go down to, um, the proportions of each. Like, we have a very small percentage of the minimum bill, so that minimum bill increase isn't gonna do a lot for us, but it kinda gets the ball rolling. And then as you come into fiscal year twenty twenty-one, July first, that triggers another increase. Like, the ten percent across the board increase. And then annually after that, it's another ten percent. So as Mr. Gavia very expertly said, ten percent on ten percent increases enough. He doesn't believe that, but I, I've been told he's wrong.
Hey, Matt, is there any way you can go through what you, how you generated at least the-
Yeah, we worked with the water department pretty extensively and with Western Sampson, the upcoming projects. And you saw, you saw the numbers up here for what, for what the upcoming projects are. So what we do is we, we compile projections for what the expenditures are gonna be over the next several years. And for a lot of the projects that they keep, that, um, we keep talking about, these are larger projects, larger numbers. So we're anticipating that the town, that the water department will borrow funds to fund those projects. So like we talked about earlier with how the treatment plant is, even though it's a ten point five million dollar project, the water, the water fund is not paying ten point five million dollars in one year. It's paying it over twenty years. So you're paying about six hundred thousand dollars a year. I think it's like six hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year over twenty years rather than the ten point five. So just picture a similar model for the two million dollar project that we keep talking about. It's not two million, excuse me, it's not two million dollars in one year. It's, it's going to be stretched out over multiple years, so.
And what's yours say?
Uh-oh, a future rate payer.
So, so think about the analysis, we do, we have it. You're right, it hasn't been shown yet, but, um, we have the numbers and it can be shown at some point. But, um, we project the expenditures for every year. So we looked at a five-year window, we looked at FY twenty through twenty-four, I believe. And in order to, uh, make the numbers work, well, what do the revenues need to be? Like, we talked about the enterprise fund, how it works. It needs to be enough revenue to fund the expenditures. So we need to look at what we think the revenues would be, would need to be in order to fund the expenditures. So we ended up coming up with a ten percent increase over, I think, a four-year period, starting FY twenty-one. Because that was a smooth way to do it and it also got us, um, the targeted revenues that we're looking for. And another piece of the equation is the retained earnings that, that Luke was talking about a little bit. I, we're, we're projecting about a little over two million dollars, um, around this timeframe. It hasn't been certified yet as far as I know, but around that. So that, that's actually a lot of money for the water fund, which is, as was mentioned earlier, a three point six million dollar budget right now. Two millions for retained earnings is a, is a large amount. So the water department can rely on use of those retained earnings a little bit over the next several years if they want. And we've included that into our projections. So, um, we're assuming that retained earnings would be used in some capacity and eventually will dwindle down to about a million dollars over the next few years. So that's an additional million dollars in play that, that wasn't already talked about. So we're talking about how the, how to make the numbers work, that's something to consider as well. So we have, we have all this in a financial analysis, um, and, you know, the numbers are, it's suggesting that the, that the water fund is, is on target with what we're looking for. So hopefully, when you see that, you'll, you'll be convinced as well.
Just do the numbers include when you're projecting forward, cause like you said, you pay it off over twenty years. But also, in ten years, you're probably gonna have new bonding projects to do new things that you haven't considered now. So have those also considered into going forward?
Well, we only looked at the five-year window.
So we only, if I may, in the same respect, Bill, we have projects that are being paid off. So, you know, just, just like every, every mortgage, every car payment, some of the stuff we have currently are gonna end. So those, those ending, um, debt will be, you know, a, a little bit to work with. It's not, we're not playing with giant, giant numbers because annually each payment is rather small compared to the project. But as, as projects get paid off, then, you know, that liberates some funds for new stuff.
Yeah, it, it would be good too if we could see, and I, again, I don't think it's excessive financial stuff. It would be good if we could see what projects are ongoing, when they get paid off, uh, you know, what's anticipated for the future. Because it all, it all enters into your decision when you, when you, you know, you look at the rates. Cause we talk about, we limited it to a five-year window and then in the next breath, we say, but, you know, we're thinking we got twenty years to pay it off. You're either in a five-year window or you're thinking twenty years ahead. I mean, you've gotta, you've gotta think of both ways and in both directions. I, I'm just concerned, I, it would be good if we could see the financial data to put it with the other data so that we knew, you know, what would, what would be going on. Cause it's really hard to sit there and hear the numbers and understand the full impact. Like you point out, this thing's in, this thing's out, this, you know. So it would be really good if we could do that at some point.
It's a, it's a dynamic situation and, um, the five-year window, as mentioned, is just really the, the proposed ten percent annual increases. Um, and the twenty-year obviously is what we have to commit to as a municipality for our borrowing, as you well know. So the five years is really what we're able to control short-term and those projects most likely will happen. Outside that, we'll, we'll adjust and make changes as we need to.
Can those numbers be posted online anywhere or?
I'm, I'm sorry, Tom.
Can those budget numbers be posted online anywhere or will it get, you know, bring it through the next meeting or what's?
I think, um, I think with not too much trouble, we could, we could have them, um, as handouts at the next meeting or if, um, interested parties, um, go ahead and contact the water department. We could email, do a blast email of, um, you know, the spreadsheets and the analysis for everybody who wants to burn a couple cups of coffee and have a blast some morning at work, I don't know.
Why don't you just post them on your website? It's public info.
It's, um, not something I've ever considered, I'm not opposed to it, I just, they, in the-
Okay, so why don't, can you guys take that away as a group and consider it? Cause I, I think it's public info, people are obviously asking for it, there's no reason to share it.
I'm not indicating we wouldn't share it at all, I'm just saying we haven't and I haven't looked at it. And I'm offering to anybody who wants to provide an email of direct communication, it's, it's not, um, it's not something we're hiding.
Okay, so why don't we do this? I'll give you my email and I will post it out online. And if I have to do that on the Board of Slutman Town Manager page, I'll do it on the Town Manager page. That's all good? And that way everybody can, can have access to it anytime that they want.
Thanks, Renee.
If, if that's what you'd-
Or put it on the water page, one or the other, people are asking. So let's just start it up and get it out there.
I'll certainly look at that. I, I have your email, I've emailed you, but you haven't got back to me, so I-
I have.
Didn't make it to my inbox, but I'll, I'll try to-
So you'll post it on the water page?
I'll try it again.
Yes or no?
I've heard, I've heard, I've heard there's some difficulties technically with, with IT in terms of posting on the water page.
It's possible.
And so it seems like if, if you're dealing with a PDF format or something like that, if you handle it via email and you have the ability to post it on a, a different town page, that may be the most fluid way to, you know, kind of them.
Right. It goes to, it goes to garbage in, garbage out, John, I don't, I don't, I don't control that.
But I'm thinking that may, there may be more IT experience on the, on the town side rather than the water department side.
Absolutely.
If I post something publicly, so that might be the easy way to do it.
Good.
So I'm a little confused by all this back and forth right now. You're offering to be transparent and send it to people, but when people are asking you to post it, you're not giving anyone an answer. Where is the disconnect there?
I think it's one's interpretation. I think they're probably very transparent and they're more than happy to disseminate the information anyway.
It seems that way, but people are asking for it to be posted in-
I have to be very careful about what we say we can do. If I can't do it, then I've committed a little bit of a mistruth. So I'm, I'm gonna say, we can try everything in our powers.
What would make it not be able to be done?
I don't, I don't have that answer, that's why-
You're being, yeah.
That's why I'm walking around it.
I get it.
I'm not saying no.
Yep.
I'm just saying you can have it. We have it, you can have it, I don't know how to get it to you. And it's not, it's not anything that we're trying to hide and doesn't, doesn't make me taller, doesn't make me better looking, doesn't make me a nickel. I'm just saying I wanna be very careful about what I say about providing you with information.
Of course.
All right, I, I have a selfish question tonight, cause I see on the upcoming capital projects at Carter Street, uh, Water Tower. I live on Carter Street.
Okay.
Okay, I have shitty water, literally, um, it's terrible. So, um, how is this going to improve or infect, affect me? Once we know if it needs to be painted or replaced, is the road gonna be ripped up and replaced too? Because I, I would like to know that. I mean, I know you don't have a timeframe on it, but is there any way to know what's going to happen down the line?
Frank, if the, if the tank gets, let's, let's go, let's go most invasive.
My neighbor and I live right across the street from it.
Right, I hear you.
Exactly, I, we had that water problem over the floor.
If, if the, um, if, if the tank gets swapped out, do we have to redo the mains, which would indicate ripping up the road?
The tank is a total separate, uh, project from the water main improvement. The tank is something-
So like, you guys have been there for the last two months.
We call it, we call it all the time, we call it all the time. We should work, but we, we need a little stipend for the stuff we do, I'm just letting you know.
Right, that tank is actually from nineteen fifty-seven. So it is in a state of disrepair. Uh, we need to either wrap the tank, sandblast the tank, haul away the hazardous materials and repaint the tank or we have to look at putting a new tank on the same site location and dismantling the old tank.
In long term, wouldn't it be even easier to just replace the tank then? Because of all the work that's had to been done on that thing?
That is exactly why we're looking at that as an option. Uh, cost also comes into effect. We're looking at, uh, the estimate for sandblast, paint and removal was seven hundred fifty thousand to eight hundred thousand. And the replacement cost that we had on the glass lined cement center tank was around one point five or one point six. You just gotta look at the, the age of the tank, it's nineteen fifty-seven.
Right, so why?
It, it makes sense to go forward, replace it with a new style tank, something that most people will not have to worry about ever again.
It's fully contained.
Why have to come out every year and do the same thing over and over again?
Yes.
Um, so there's a hundred and twenty mile pipe. Now, you have the new treatment plant in place, um, what's to say that the old pipes aren't gonna recontaminate, recontaminate the water before they get to our houses?
So every spring and every fall, the crews go out and do flushing. As many of you have seen and experienced, the really dirty water, as opposed to the normal dirty water. The flushing liberates the iron and manganese sediment that is mobile. So there's, um, maybe we can talk about it like hardening of the arteries. So some of the iron and manganese has actually bonded to the interior of the older inferior pipe. It's cast iron, it's really good solid pipe, but it doesn't release, the iron wants to go to other iron. So the iron and manganese are very friendly to that old unlined iron pipe and it lines it, but it's become hardening of the artery, it's part of the pipe. So that six inch pipe possibly is now maybe, we'll just say, four and a half inches. Those hardened artery interior pipes aren't gonna let that iron and manganese go, cause they really like it. It's an iron pipe, it's bonded to the iron pipe and that, we can't even flush out with, we have a unidirectional flushing, so we started one in the town and, um, we've done the data analysis to get all the sediment moving. You cannot even flush it out that way. So in answering your question, some of the pipes have attached particles that won't even go into your house. So the new filtered water will go right by that, not grab it and leave. There will be some in the corners, the valves, the crevices, if you will, that may not come out initially, but we believe over time and with the upgrading of the oldest and worst pipes, it will get significantly better much, much sooner.
So, can I follow up with that? So your analogy essentially is that we won't need to have the flushing if the water's clean?
No, you have to-
Oh, no.
You have to have a flush, that's, that's essential.
Yeah.
So probably about sixty percent of the pipe you have is good pipe and does not need to be replaced.
We're going back to if it's bonded to it.
And it might be more than that, so.
Can I, can I ask one question? So that's what I'm trying to understand, you said it's bonding to it, so why would we still need to flush if the water's clean?
Because there are sediment in corners and crevices that are very difficult to get out of the system. You're vacuuming your house.
I, I don't need another napkin.
Stuff gets in the corner.
So, so can I ask this, the, so the treatment plant, right, we have the five wells. What, what five wells are part of this treatment plant?
Four, five and six.
Okay, so four, five and six are also on the upgrade schedule?
Because they're in the proximity to each other, yes.
Okay, so those are being upgraded, what's going on with the one, two and three? Isn't, isn't one the bad one right now? Like the one that, where the numbers, Frank, if I remember the premier, you know, it's one has been continuously-
One does track above the actual level that's set by DEP for manganese. Um, it hovers right around that, that point three, sometimes a little over, sometimes it's under. It really depends on, uh, on the water level is what you get. That well is going to be cleaned, there's no guarantee that you're gonna see a difference. If it's iron and manganese that's attached itself to the screen structure where water gets pulled through, you're gonna still have the same result. Um, if it's cleaned and that goes away, you'll notice the difference, those numbers will drop. But without any type of additional filtration there, those numbers may hover where they're at because that's exactly what comes out of the ground.
Okay, so why are we upgrading four, five and six? If they're going to be running through the water treatment plant, we have two other wells that aren't being treated, one wishes to work in town.
Because the cost effective of the project, you get two hundred gallons a minute out of well one. The length that you would have to do a directional bore from well one, which is on Pine Street, under the pond, which is across the way, which I can't remember the name of now, to get to Pine Street to make the connection, far exceeds the cost it would to replace that well entirely. There is no benefit for such a, a low volume producing well to have a major filtration system comment. So if everything goes the way we want to, four, five and six will take the majority of the water and we can decrease the usage at wells one and three.
So what are you anticipating out of those three wells? What's it gonna cover from a production perspective?
If we, we're looking at now drilling test holes for moving wells five and six. Well five's been in the same place since nineteen seventy-two. Well six has been in place, uh, since nineteen ninety-four. Both of those wells are at their life expectancy. We've had a failure years back on well six where the screen actually had a partial collapse. So we've had to install, install a second screen inside, which limits the cleaning capability when you have a surge rig come in and basically surge the well. You, uh, it's basically a round baffle that goes into the twenty-four inch casing. You pump it up and down, you're blasting the water in and out of the screen openings, breaking up the iron and manganese and then you pump that out. And that's how you redevelop the well and you repump and see what you've gathered from that. There's many different methods that can be used as far as hydro fracking, like you see in, in personal wells at home. There's different chemicals that can be used, but at the age that these wells are at now, it is more cost effective to look at removing them from their existing location, moving them within the four hundred foot buffer zone from the original location and drilling a new well.
And that's the upgrade?
That is the upgrade that we're looking at, we're in the process.
Didn't, didn't we get a considerable increase in the flow from four from its recent rehab? Or was that five?
That was four.
That was four. So, so what we did, um, you take four offline, Renee, and you put the pump out and you re, was it a re-screen? Cause I know one of them had a screen issue.
Yep.
And so after, we'll call it the, the well maintenance, um, we got significantly more production from well four. Will it last, we're not sure, because the problem we have, our, um, our aquifer has these naturally occurring minerals and you can't compare it specifically with another municipality that doesn't have the iron and manganese that we have. The material we're pulling in from these wells to our treatment plant is what you're getting out of your pipe, so.
Well, and, and the reason I'm asking about what do you think production, because you're, we're about to do an increase across all of the users, right? But what's the percentage of users who we anticipate will not have improved water? That, that's what I'm trying to understand, cause it's back to Bill's point. If, if people will say, well, hey, I'll pay an increased weight, rate for, you know, better water, of course they're going to do it, but now you're gonna increase rate and people may not see improvement. So what do you anticipate that percentage is going to be like?
So if, if all the wells that go through the treatment plant, if we were to bring them back to their original capacity, we would have two point five MGD and the average demand over the year is one point seven MGD. So in theory, we wouldn't need any other wells besides four, five and six. However, you obviously like to have backup supplies, so.
But, but the other two wells, those, I, I only know the one is bad, is the other one bad too that's not-
No, well, well, three's very good.
Three is really good, but it's also a low producer. So it's, you got a little really good water, doesn't help us. And it's far away. You know, you can't put it on the treatment plant.
So what, what, what are the plans for the other, like, are we going to see another project on here for that one well?
Which one?
For, was it well one? For, was it well one? For well?
The projects that you're going to see that are listed that I had asked for was for four log removal to be added at wells one and three.
Okay.
There is no plan other than general maintenance at wells one and three until the, the plant is completed and then we'll look at that as we did.
And then out of the, the expected water main project, so we have East Pine Street, 123, I think there may have been another one. How many miles does that cover out of the 119? That, that we already have on the books, do we think?
It's supposed to two.
Yeah, I don't.
Two miles?
Couple of miles.
Yeah, but east, east main at Holmes is 1100 feet. And Pine is about 800 feet. And then the, I guess if you want to consider the Mass DOT project, that, that's actually quite significant length. But it's more of an abandonment of an existing main that's parallel and another, and transferring and getting new services, so.
Okay, and.
Nice, thanks, Carol.
Yeah.
Are those the, are they, those the oldest ones that you guys talked about? Are any of those on the list of the oldest highest priority?
Pine Street.
Pine Street. It also leads to one of the wells, so that's another priority reason too.
Yeah. And what's the mileage on that one?
Pine Street is 800.
800.
Under your feet. Roughly, 8700 inches or something. So we'll go from the well station up Pine to Pine.
What's the testing schedule look like? So I know the treatment plant comes on early 2020. The rate increase will get, we can build in boxes in March. But when is the test report coming back that says, you know, the iron and manganese are hopefully lower?
We test every other month on the iron and manganese. You'll see, if there was an exceedance, we do a posting. And it's required to be posted for the previous quarter. So what happens is you'll see that if you go to town hall, there's a posting there, it's actually on our webpage. And it will show what the iron and manganese levels were, if they had an exceedance, in what location the sample was taken. Something to remember is the action level that's set by DEP is for a person over a lifetime drinking water from that source. Nobody here, including myself, who spends time in the wells, spends a lifetime in the wells drinking the water from that one particular source. We have a blended system, so when the water leaves the, the location, it goes into the system. Pipes are all mingled together. So the, the number that you see coming out of that one existing well is not anything in relation to what is coming out of the tap or what is being stored in the storage tanks in the center of town. But DEP decided that as a long-term process, Norton had discolored water, iron and manganese problems, they wanted to have some public outreach. That's where they come up with this implementation of public notice. So anything over their action level, which is point three, we're required to post publicly. And that's why you see that notification go out.
And is the expectation that wells four, five, and six would be below the action level once the plant's online?
Yes, most definitely.
Definitely.
That is the reason for that filtration plant, is to remove the iron and manganese from the system. Anybody? Yeah?
There's a mention of two storage reservoirs. What are they and where are they?
We have.
I know where the water tanks are.
Yep, there was actually one behind the Carter Street elevated tank, it's on the ground. The other one is actually down off of Mansfield Ave, where the, the Polaroid or the Otopax International building is. It's actually on property behind that.
You suggested in your, in your information here that Department of Transportation is projecting in the future water mains. Is this only this section of 123 or all of 123?
It is from 495 to the Elm Street intersection over here. That is the repair that Mass DOT is doing.
Just the intersection of 123 and 140?
No, from the 495 bridge, all the way down West Main, sorry, East Main to the intersection here at Elm Street.
Right.
That's the connection.
Is the water main on the other section of 123 that's involved with the sewer? Is it proximate to where the sewer is going in? Is, or is it on the other side of the street? Is it, since, since, since the street is being dug up, is there some suggestion of an improvement on those water mains while the street is dug up?
The water main on the West Main project where the sewer is going, has already been replaced.
It has been. How long ago was that?
That's when they jumped the sewer back into the old abandoned one, right?
Yes, it is.
Eight years, nine years?
Eight, nine years maybe, at least.
You remember the horrible traffic nonsense one summer? It seemed like it would never end.
I just didn't pay attention.
Well, you were listening to the radio.
I got all the time now.
With the suggestion of sewer, is that at a standstill on West Main?
Yes. There are many.
Is there a problem?
There are many delays that are put in, yeah, go ahead.
What we have here is a fantastic, perfect storm of regulation. Our, our world is just regulation. The DOT won't let the contractor dig on evenings when Xfinity has a show. Let's say that really slow for everybody. Some, some weeks there are four shows. I purposely left the Xfinity one night, lucky enough to go to a show, and went down towards the proposed work that wasn't happening. Nobody goes right. Everybody, everybody, the police and all the cones and everybody goes left to 495 and beyond. Nobody comes to our lovely little town. However, DOT in all of its wisdom, even after the contractor specifically asked the question again last week, they will not allow evenings of concert work. I have to meet with the contractor in the next few days to go over what our upcharges will be because they can't work. They have crews that are not able to put in pipes and they can't go start another project because we have that crew, in theory. But they can't work here because DOT says not on, and they work, mind you, from 9:00 PM until 5:00 AM. So the shows get out about 11-ish. People are gone and the 15 or 20 or 100 that trickle down here are gone at midnight. So, as a layperson, I would say, let's do road cutting or mild stuff until midnight and then we'll go for five hours, which they could, they could lay some pipes in five hours. But that's why we're, you're not going to see a lot right now. They're prob, they're probably on a two-week hiatus, truth be known. I don't like it, but that's, that's about, that's about the long and the short of it. So our, our lovely DOT is not allowing the project to jump ahead.
Were you thinking about listing of what piping will be done over the period of time? Or is there a project?
The, the first few are Pine, Holmes, and East, East Main at the 495 intersection.
And is it your intent to do the entire town?
We have already replaced approximately 60% of the 120 miles of infrastructure. We will do, as needed, the worst first. And we will, we will come up with that water needs plan within the next several months.
So have you sent out a survey to find out which people are multi-directed? Or do you know where those people have been screaming at you? Because, because we tend to be quiet and not know what's going to happen.
Suffer, suffering silence.
Yeah, exactly.
It's easier just to, right, yep.
Yeah. What, some experiencing, which is pretty bad.
Yep, sometimes, believe it or not, it's the, the good mains that are carrying the tainted water through them from other places. So while we totally log and look at the complaints and the bad water cause areas, we know the mains that are problematic because they break from time to time. When we tap into them to put in new services or upgrade services, we see the hardening of the arteries, which I referred to before as, you know, excessive iron buildup. And we, we know the style and type of pipe that we have and we know where they are and when we should replace.
Well, there's also the fear that I'll be paying extra money, one still won't be good.
I, I under, I completely understand your fears and I'm here to tell you the water's going to get a lot better once this plant gets turned on. There's, there's no way it isn't. It abs, it absolutely gets better.
It's just been a long, long time.
It has.
I can literally say.
I'm going to pour you a cup of this and come drink it.
Don't you worry about a thing.
Right.
Say, this has been a steady decline.
It's true.
So it's a little fearful. I actually spend a bit of money because I would not feed the water, my animals, I would not feed myself or my family. So my money bill hasn't been spent on it actually on a monthly basis. Yes, I'd rather pay that, to be assured.
Right.
And you take, you take shouts. I mean, the manganese just doesn't affect what you're drinking. It's also on your body, your skin is one of the major components of your body.
Right.
That takes it in. So, you know, honestly, take a little issue with the oil now and the DEP if that's okay. So, yeah, it just really, I'd like to see some results before more money gets plowed in. I guess that's the fear.
This, this is why we're here again.
It's an accountability issue. We're not seeing anything yet, we're not seeing it.
Right, it's, I will, I will just say that we had to get, it's chicken and the egg thing. We have to get the treatment plant up and running and online. And we all share in the expenses of the treatment plant. And that, the only way you get a treatment plant is to go out and buy one. You can't sample one, you can't bring one in for a minute and say, hey, this is going to work. You do the design and, I know you're all sick of me hearing it, but we had to go through Mass Historic Society for nearly three years and for the cost of a half a million dollars to go through a bunch of red tape that didn't amount to anything. So again, it's our regulations. It's our own government really slowing us down. So I'm here to tell you that this plant would have been online a year and a half by now if it weren't for the, the holdup.
If I may ask one more question?
Excuse me?
You, you can, you were saying a few things at the beginning and kind of new to this.
Oh.
With, with the town meeting and so forth. You are a separate entity from the town?
We are.
Is your accountability not then to the town?
No, we are, we are, we are accountable to the town as well as the ratepayers, but it's just, it's, um, we are funded as an enterprise account. You can look at it like a small business. So the water funds stay with the water and the sewer funds stay with the water and the water employees work with the water and the sewer employees work with the sewer and the sewer items go to the sewer. So it's a, it's a very cut and dry thing by the state regulations of our operation.
Kind of say like the electric company, North Abros, they won't let people?
Same thing, Mansfield has one, right. Tarten has one. Same kind of.
That's stressing to me because I feel as though you can't really work the way you like to work. Why not have a town project rebacked?
It's, it's a different way to go, but it, it's essentially very similar.
But that's expenditure, this should be a big capital expenditure period, it should be common.
We, we have spent some money and that's what Mr. Gavie is concerned about.
But it should be an override, to me, that should be an override expense.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't do the O word here. Yep.
Part of the, part of the reason I can explain a little bit, when you're old enough to have been around. Enterprise accounts became in vogue after Proposition 2 and a half came into being. Because what it did was by going into an enterprise account and making the water and sewer departments self-funding, it removed the amount of money that you spend on water and sewer from the Proposition 2 and a half cap. So that's why, that's not always why it's done, but that's why it was done here, I can tell you that. Because it took those millions of dollars that we were spending and took it out and freed that up on the property tax side to be able to fund police and fire and schools and all those other things. So that's the main reason why it goes on, you know, on that way. And, and they, they are town bodies, you know, I mean, the water commissioners are elected, so they're, they're a town board, they're, you know, they're, they're a town board. And I wouldn't want their job for all the, you know.
Come on, Bill. Come on, be out of order.
They, they are, they are a town board, but they, they have freedom because they're elected and they run the, the, the accounts have to be separate, the sewer count has to be separate, the water department has to be separate. It was designed to take money in and push money out. And it's separate from the tax rate and has nothing to do with, with your, your taxes.
So are they going to publish an annual report to all that?
We do. Thank you. And before, before we all run out the door, I want to thank actually every single one of you. Some of you asked some really good questions, some of you asked some tough questions.
Still more questions.
I know, I'm just saying, a lot of people leaving. I just want to thank everybody who came for coming. This is, um, this is a little bit of democracy in process and I like it. Any other questions?
Quick question about the flushing. I know that you tried to answer it, but you were interrupted. I know that flushing will still be needed, but could you just explain so people understand why it's needed? Because I think that some people are probably thinking that the water is going to be miraculously like perfect.
Again, Frank, you want that one?
Just why, just why it's still needed, so people understand the whole concept, why?
I, I worked for the town of Mansfield for 36 years and we're on the same aquifer as these three wells are. And being upstream, we're, we experienced the same things in East Mansfield and some people that I've talked to. And it was horrendous for years. So when we finally put out that online and we had three of our wells going directly into that, that plant, that our first plant, we had to do, because you still have residual in the water mains, you know, at all time. And you got the tubicula that's in the main, excuse me. And so you're going to do that biannual flushing. And once you get that biannual flushing, now you're flushing now with clean water as opposed to that, the crappy water. Pardon my French, I'm sorry. So you, so you're getting, you're going to get that influx of all that clean water throughout all the mains now as opposed to all the dirty water. So you don't get that residual like you had before. You're still going to get it periodically. That, that's, that's going to be natural. We still get it in Mansfield.
Yeah, I understand.
But it is, once, once we, once we were done with our second flush, for instance, the Canoe River Campground, I'm sure you may know where that is. They had an intricate system that they had and he has shut that off. He turned it off. He never had to use it again after we, we're, I mean, it, it's going to work. It's, we are full confidence it's going to work and, you know, but we, we've got to do that couple flushes first because to get that residual out and get that clean water flowing through our water mains. Whether they're older tubicula water mains or newer.
And then what's the maintenance schedule for that?
And you'll still do your, your biannual, biannual flushing. But the, you know, as, as a maintenance, that's, that's standard, actually. That's actually to take his, it's regulate, we're regulated to do that, to do the biannual flushings. Hi.
Okay, hi. So pardon my ignorance, I'm really new to all this.
No, no, please.
So this is making me, I guess I really just don't know where the dirty water is coming from. Is it coming from the well? Is it coming from our pipes?
It's coming right out of the ground.
The ground, yeah.
It's coming right out of the ground, that's where it's all initiating from. And then it's, it goes into our pipes and stays there until it gets flushed out. Or God forbid you have a broken water main, sorry Frank, I never want to say that. Never want to say that word. But that's, that kind of stuff or fire, any kind of directional flow that will stir up that tubicula that's in the main that's going to, until you flush it out, is just going to spread it all over the place. Are unidirectional flushing?
Really not, Norton, it's.
It's everywhere. It's, it's everywhere. It's, it's this whole region. Iron and manganese is in this whole region.
Oh.
Yep. And so when, once we do that flushing, you know, that, that helps. But you have periodic issues in town such as main breaks, fires, that changes that flow, that direction of flow. You've got that flow going down your water main this way and then all of a sudden you've got a main break over here. Now it's pulling it this way and it's steering all that stuff up. That's where you're getting the dirty water.
So that's why you said one well has cleaner water than another well? It depends on what type of.
Correct, it's on a different aquifer. It's not, probably not as inundated with the iron and magnesias. Yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you.
But once you can stop that dirty water to come in and get that fresh water out, you're going to see a major difference.
And when will that be?
You're probably going to look at about a year because you're going to need to do two good flushes, unidirectional flushes. And unidirectional means, you, you look at it as a tree. You're, you're, you're flushing the water up the tree and you shut some of the branches off and you're just flushing this branch, then you shut that off and you flush this branch.
So a year from now?
So, yeah, yeah.
A year from now or when the treatment plant comes online?
Well, treatment plant's got to be online for, you know, for all this to work. That's the key.
And we're still expecting.
Once you start that, once you start that engine and that's start that going, we'll do a, a fall flush and a spring flush.
Fall. The treatment plant will be online in the fall.
Yep.
This fall?
This fall.
So when, when are the, I know the last update, you couldn't clean the wells because we didn't have enough water. Right, so when are those?
Well, four was cleaned, even though we, we took it upon ourselves, we had enough storage to sustain the system for as long as it took to clean the well, which needed to be done. We had vast improvement after the cleaning was done at well four. The talk right now is the next well will be well number six to be cleaned. And we're working it out with the contractor for the timing so that we can have the piping installed. Currently, there's one pipe in the ground where five and six come out, go into that main. We need to have another pipe installed prior to that, so when the new pumps go into the existing wells, they will be transferred over to this new pipe, which will go directly to the treatment plant. Because if not, there's no avenue to get it around the river and get it to the plant.
So, are you looking next month to clean them?
There is a possibility of six going next month. It just hasn't been determined yet.
And then, I think you said from that point is two months, right, for the DEP testing?
No, um, DEP, it's a 32-hour test.
Okay. Is it, is it going to be each well or is it gonna be one well?
It'll probably be one well and then two wells, but we haven't determined that 100%.
Okay.
But it, it will be staged.
So, we clean the last two wells September, October, do the testing a week in October and November and then we're online in November. That's fall. I mean, fall to me is October by.
Right. The, the goal is fall. Everything has to fall into place and that's what we're still holding.
Yeah, we also have, we need to make sure we have operators and we need to make sure we have the volume of water to test the plant, so those are the two kind of wild cards.
And the volume of water, we expect that to increase based on cleaning the wells? So, right now, if we try to put that print online, we don't have enough water from our wells to even use the plant?
If all three wells went online, we would have enough to run through the plant.
Okay.
The concern is that starting off with one well, we wanna make sure that we have the minimum capacity needed to keep the plant running continuously, so you can meet that 32 or 24-hour run test. If the well is even less than what the treatment plant is discharging, that means obviously we're gonna have an issue. The, the treatment plant's gonna turn on and off until the holding vessels are full. So, we need to make sure that we have enough water from the first well to meet the, the process to prove the plant and then we will switch over to the second and then the third well we committed as well.
The process. It's arduous and annoying because it takes so long. It didn't take so long, but that's the process unfortunately that we have to go through.
Well, it sounds like a good plan.
We're getting there. We're getting there. It's frustrating for us as much as it is for everybody else.
What's that, Sean? You said the other risk is hiring folks.
I had two meetings so far with the town manager and the union to create positions. These are new positions that have to be added to the union contract, uh, that are not in existence right now. So, there's a process to go through with the union creating the positions, getting salary in place, getting job description in place before we can even post these positions, which goes in-house first. Uh, any of the operators that have the qualifications required to run this plant have the opportunity to step up and be moved into the plant at whatever rate is agreed upon. Uh, they also have the option not to. If they don't wanna work in that type of environment, would rather work in the street where they work now. If it goes through, I believe it's a 10-day posting in-house and we do not have any qualified applicants, then it will go external and be posted to the public.
Put your time to get it posted. I mean, are you expecting you're gonna have them build at the same time or?
I am just waiting on the union. This is something unfortunately that should have been done long before I sat in this chair. Um, unfortunately, it wasn't thought of.
One of the problems.
Well, then should have been long before. It's any of the guys sat in here.
A lot of things should have been moved and, um, definitely been in place long ago.
One of the big problems Frank's running into right now is, um, with operators, they're operator in training. Uh, that's a new brand that they're putting on us operators. So, um, they can get their licenses, but they're only in training. They have to pay a few months' hours. Uh, so, once they get those hours, they'll be full operators and it'll be a lot easier to, to maneuver people around when he needs to move around. But as an operator in training, you need an operator to work with them, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, you know, yeah. So, it's, it's difficult because they kinda catch you, you know, and it's all money. It's all money. You're gonna, the, the testing now is, is crazy money now.
And the logic, the logic was you don't need, um, all the operators prior to having the treatment plant. So, it's kind of a catch-22. You don't want four qualified folks on the staff if you don't have the plant to run it. So, now we've got the plant coming up and did you have one, one person come back with a?
I have one person who's met the qualifications set in place, um, for the time served. He has acquired his license in full.
So, we're inching, we're inching along on the, on the employees.
That's huge.
It's, it's a big, I think, how many do we need? Two, maybe three?
The way it looks right now, we're gonna need at least one primary operator and a minimum of two secondary operators.
Right.
Uh, more will be determined when we have our final approval from DEP as far as for the hours of operation that we grant it to.
And how it goes on automation. So, we're, we're inching along on the all fronts.
Time for stress.
It moves.
Anybody else? Yes?
Just a math question?
Oh, I'm out. I'm out.
So, I think the number of 670,000 per year is like the, the debt service charge for the treatment plant, right? So, your, per year numbers, you have about 5,800 homes for users, so if you're running up to 6,000, about $112 per year per home or about 28 bucks per quarter. So, is that the increase that ultimately the working force, so they go from a minimum charge of 35 to 63?
You've, you've got one version of it, yes.
Right, and there's also debt we're retiring.
Yep.
We talked about that and then we'll also, when we start doing more work, incur more debt.
So, the debt will just revolve, but somewhere in that 63 dollar a quarter minimum charge is what we're looking towards.
Exactly.
Yeah.
No, no.
Total.
About 30 dollars more per quarter. You're not splitting context that way.
Sure.
Where the, where the ceiling might be.
Right.
I understand you guys are gonna study this every year, adjust it up or down as we need to, knowing that's.
Can I ask another question? And I apologize for covering this when I stepped out.
Didn't you get like four tickets for questions when you came in? I think you're at six. You borrowed somebody's tickets, Renee?
I, I'm, I'm a party of three.
Ah, they're not voters though, and I think they consume water in your house. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
They take some very orange and brown water. So, the pipes, right, we talked about the pipes and, and this goes back to, are we looking far enough ahead? Are we really looking at increases that we should have? So, and quick math, right, 120 miles a pipe, you said 60% have already been updated, so it leaves about 48 miles. Based on the projects that we have right now, covering about two miles of pipe at like 3.9 million dollars, it puts us somewhere around 93.6 million to do all the pipes and that's not assuming inflation or anything else. But yet, if we're only looking at 2 million dollars per year for these projects and that's, that's saying you have no other project other than pipes, we're short about 40 million dollars.
Well, not all pipes need to be replaced.
Well, I'm, I'm going by what you said, 40, 40%.
So, some of them might not even need to be replaced till 40, 50 years from now. So, we're looking at the 20-year plan and the priority list of five years. But what really needs to happen right away, you start with your oldest main frequent break history of larger diameter online pipe, that would be your priorities, which we're focused on in the next six years.
Okay, and so, we know out of that 48 miles, we know how many miles of pipe that need to be done in the past five years. But in the next five years, I'm sorry.
We're looking at like the 20-year plan is roughly 2 million over 20 years.
It pretty much talks to you, Renee. The, um, the pipe breaks and you'll see a main break and then the crew in the road doing a patch and then, you know, we, after a couple of those, we go ahead and replace that. But the, the statement was that 60% of our mains are of a newish type.
Right. That could last 80-plus years.
Yeah, I, I mean, it just seems like we're, like, again, we're, we're not looking at, we're not looking at increasing enough to have, to deal with these over time. And I just.
So, it is a balance. So, the town of Sharon spends a million dollars a year on a pipe and they're not hugely different in size, so.
Are they different in like the iron and manganese, like they've been saying?
No, they have very similar issues. They have similar age of water mains.
They surface water or are they groundwater?
They're groundwater. Um, so Norton actually is being pretty aggressive. Um, you know, it's a balance. We could try to do more, but then the rates would have to go up more, so.
What we're, what we're comfortable with at this point is to get the treatment plant online with some, I'm gonna say conservative both sides. Conservative in that we know we have some to do, but we don't wanna go willy-nilly replacing lines that may not need to be replaced when we have the, the better water, as Steve said, coming in.
Right.
So, it's a, I hate to say it, say it again, but it's a wait and see. We're gonna get the treatment plant online. We'll do our couple of flushes. We have projects that are funded and gonna happen. But, um, as we move forward, why go ahead and spend, you know, 4 million dollars on a significant line replacement if the water going there is of a certain quality and we're not having main breaks? We have to, we have to wait and see on that and we won't know until the plant is fully online and we do a couple of flushes. But in the meantime, we do have that five-year plan in place to do our 2 million dollar expenditures, which we feel is sufficient. And then we review, analyze and some people always want more, some people always want less and we're, we're stuck dead in the middle.
Right. And my, my point is just that you and I have talked about this, right? Like, at what point do you get where you're, you're self-sufficient and not coming back to a town meeting for more money and more projects?
Right.
You know, so I think now's the time and if you're, if you feel that 2 million is aggressive and, and that's gonna keep us in a good position, then that's fine. But I, you know, I just ask that you, you look at that and consider it because the last thing is, you know, every, every town meeting you come to asks for more money for a project that we didn't anticipate. Knowing that things are going to work. Can I understand that?
That 2 million is, is an average. There's gonna be some years like Luke, Luke, too, there's gonna be a project. If you look at some of the, the plans that we looked at, you know, if you have 5,000 linear feet of pipe that you're gonna install, that's definitely one, 2 million dollars. So, do you do half the road? Are you able to do half the road without causing more infrastructure issues down the road? Or do you bite the bullet and spend 3.2 or whatever it comes out to be and do that one stretch and take it a little easy next time around? You know, that's just a ballpark number and that's where they come up with the average for that. So, it's not exactly, you're not always gonna see that the, you know, Pine Street's gonna cost 2 million dollars. It just doesn't work that way. Um, it depends on how many house services, how many connections there have to be, uh, how many valves you need to add, how many hydrants need to add.
Yeah.
Everything, uh, is taken into account depending on location. Uh, like I said earlier, not every main needs to be replaced. If it's of adequate size and adequate type, there is a cleaning and lining process that can be done, which is substantially less money than an actual main replacement. And those are some options that we're gonna look at on some of the larger mains in town. Um, there's a little bit of work involved. You have to do a few test pits to make sure the main is structurally sound. Uh, then you actually cut a section out of it and see just how clogged the main is. I believe, there's a picture up on the bottom of the screen there. It's tough to see there, but on the bottom on the left is a, is a clogged main, just like a clogged artery and then there's after cleaning is on the right. And essentially you leave with a brand-new pipe with very, very minimal impact to the, uh, the suburban way.
And, and the traffic flow.
The traffic, everything.
Couple of points of entry, no, no repaving, couple of patches. Very nice. But again, that, we're holding off on that to see the results of our new treatment plant and the associated worst of the worst pipe and then we'll look at it again.
I just wanna fill out something from the idiot's that, uh, coming back to the town meeting, looking for money for future projects. I think going forward, and this is, to me, is a selectman asking, when you guys come with a warrant looking for more money, please include a, a projection of any rate impacts to users. I think if that's not on there, I, I won't vote in support of the article. I think we need to understand when we're committing to spending money, what that's gonna mean for the council.
We'll certainly look at that. It just, um, we've done a whole bunch of improvements prior to your sitting in the chair, so it didn't affect rates at all. And we purposely waited until we had the better water imminent thing, but sure, it's.
But I've heard tonight that this is, this is years of improvements and now starting to get the touch up for us. So, I might wanna be proactive as a town to understand and say, I did that math in five minutes, plus nine, on my, on my calculator, nothing special, in the range, you know.
Right, I get you.
2 million dollars for this project, um, based on the 6,000 people, this is gonna have maybe max of 5 to 6 dollar per quarter increase on the rate here. Just keeps people informed and avoids having to come out and have meetings like this and getting people all worked up and angry. So, it just goes back to transparency and sharing information.
No, I get you. It just, we haven't had a, we haven't had a rate increase and we've done a lot of projects, so what I'm saying is each project didn't affect the rate. And, I mean, you can say what it's gonna do in the.
And you didn't, maybe that's the thing.
After four years.
It's just to have any effect on rate. Perfect.
Sure. No, I get you. Thank you. One last question. Anybody? No questions. We've done it. Well, I'm gonna thank you all again, um, for coming out, taking your time. Input is essential to us and, uh, we will try to get those numbers out. And, uh, thanks again. We're gonna, we're gonna adjourn, we're gonna adjourn the public meeting now.